This is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
All right. Thanks so much, Troy. Welcome, everyone, to the October 22 business meeting for the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners. The time now is 1:30. And so let's go ahead and come to order, please. And let's begin the meeting today with a moment of silence as our invocation. All right. Thank you, everyone. Everyone will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Turning to the county attorney for certification of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The county attorney's office reviewed all items on the agenda, and the board has appropriate jurisdiction over these matters.
Thank you, counselor. Commissioners, any disclosures for items on this agenda today?
I have none. Thank you.
I have none either. Thank you.
Nor do I. Moving to our consent agenda, commissioners, we did have several changes come through yesterday that were made to the items on the consent agenda. Is there any desire to pull any items from the consent agenda?
I have none to pull. I would just like to say that Haley Hall has been taking minutes for our meetings. And when I went through the minutes this week, I saw absolutely no mistakes. They were absolutely perfect. So I just want to thank Haley for everything you do.
All right. Good job, Haley. Well done, clerk. At this time, we'll open the floor for any citizen comments or any items on the consent agenda. Is anyone who would like to come forward and give public testimony on any item on the consent agenda? I am seeing none in the room. Troy, do we have anyone online who would like to give remote testimony for any items on the consent agenda?
I have no online comment.
Thank you very much, Troy. Board, how would we like to dispose with this consent agenda?
I have a motion to approve the request in all items A through U of the consent agenda.
And I'll second that motion.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And consent agenda is adopted. Okay, moving to our regular agenda, finalize the purchase of real property from Crisis Center, a Colorado nonprofit corporation, for the purpose of operating an emergency shelter and collateral programs for survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault in the amount of $1,476,000. Tim Hallmark, Director of Facilities, presenting for staff. Come on forward, Tim. Tell us what we got.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Tim Hallmark for staff. Property in question, we did have it appraised by a professional outside appraisal company. Property appraised at $1.8 million. The seller has agreed to a purchase price of $1,476,000. We have done our facilities' inspections. As far as conditions and whatnot, everything looks good. We are happy to move forward with the purchase of the property. I will turn over to Deputy County Manager Barbara Drake to discuss the utilization and programming of the facility if the board directs us to proceed with the purchase.
Thank you, Tim. Barbara?
Thank you, commissioners. Barbara Drake for staff. This is a thing to celebrate, I think, in terms of what this means for our community. Just very briefly, as Tim mentioned, this facility will be to house a domestic violence and sexual assault emergency shelter and all the programming that is associated with that. The goal here is to put in a modern shelter with a holistic approach that offers a holistic approach that addresses physical, emotional, and economic aspects of abuse. A shelter capacity that is 22 beds in size with 20 regular beds and two emergency beds so that we can accommodate emergency calls from law enforcement. And we want the facility to accommodate barriers to use of the shelter for things like large families and eventually for people that have pets and do not want to leave their pets behind to go into shelter. We want this program to be very community-focused with a strong training and community education component. We want this entity to partner with all the other initiatives and programs that we work with as county departments and commissioner initiatives to make sure that we're providing a full continuum of services. So not only just addressing the emergency shelter needs that people have, but then what happens after the end of that emergency shelter? And how do we help people get out into the community and continue to live lives free of domestic violence? And we want to include legal advocacy, advice, and other types of services, including things like remote court testimony for people. The program will include case management, therapy, programs for children, resource navigation, education training, job seeking, and transitional services tailored to meet each family's needs. And lastly, we envision a program that will be able to generate some revenue based on some other funding sources that are available and also the possibility of charging for certain types of services, like therapeutic services. We currently have an RFP out in the community for a vendor that will come in and will provide this array of services. It will be a vendor that has significant experience working with domestic violence. And so that's what we plan for this facility. It's very exciting, I think, for us to take this step and rebuild this program into one that is really a program that is visible, is responsive to community needs, and is known for its leadership in this critical area of community service delivery. So that's the plan.
Very good. Thank you, Barbara. Questions from the board for either the deputy county manager or director of facilities?
You know, I don't have any questions, but this is an exciting day. And I'm very thankful to you, Barbara, as well as you, Tim, and the entire staff team that has worked for years on developing this concept. I'd also like to thank my friend and colleague, George Teal, for saying from the outset that the way in which we do crisis services in Douglas County could bear some improvement. And there are opportunities for us to ensure that particularly women and children fleeing domestic violence have a safe place to receive wraparound care, case management, mental health services, job services, legal advocacy co-located in a place that they can trust with experts and professionals that they can rely upon to get back to self-sufficiency. So this is an exciting day. Thank you for going on this long journey with us, and I'm excited to see the future.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
Barbara, we're here today because of all the work you did. You did a needs assessment to figure out first, what does this county need? And now we're going to be hiring some nonprofit to apply, going through the process to manage it. And again, this is another example of the great work you've done and the legacy you'll leave behind. And, Tim, I don't know how you find time on your plate for everything you do with all the building things we give you to do, but we're very appreciative of what you've done.
Thank you.
To the deputy county manager, Barbara, can you remind us, that needs assessment that Commissioner Thomas spoke to, could you please remind the board what agency we worked with on that one?
We worked with Health Management Associates. They were our contracted needs assessor. So it was an independent view. They talked with many of the stakeholders in our community. They talked with all the law enforcement jurisdictions. They worked with the current vendor, the Crisis Center, that runs many of these programs, and then other nonprofit human services, anybody that was really touched by domestic violence issues, to put a very comprehensive program together. And this follows their recommendation that we need a shelter of this capacity and one that is multi-dimensional and really works with people for a period of time from crisis to more transitional services. So it closely reflects what was in that needs assessment.
Okay. Thank you very much, Barbara, for that reminder. I've only lived in the county about 25 years now. And during that time, you know, domestic violence and being able to provide for the domestic violence victims, at the very least on an emergency basis in a system with that transition, has always been a very important goal for the county. I'm just really glad that we were able to take a fresh look at this property, at the issue of domestic violence and the services that we wanted to have as a county. And yeah, really take a good, hard look at what we needed. And thank you very much, Commissioner, for your kind words there. But I'll just remind everybody, we all did it, the three of us together. This is something we're all in on. And of course, very much appreciate the leadership and the great, great work from the management here in the county. You know, deputy county manager, are you sure you won't consent to being chained to your desk? Or do you really need to retire here soon?
I think I better stick with my plans.
All right. Because the county attorney says we can't chain you forcibly. We need your consent. I guess, folks, we're going to have to figure something else out. Let's go ahead. And any other questions from the board?
I have none.
I have none.
Thank you, commissioners. Let's go ahead and transition to public testimony. Is there any member of the public that would like to come forward and give testimony to the board on the purchase of this real property? Jill, come on forward. And Jill, please do give us your name and tell us where you're from, ma'am.
Good job, you guys, just standing in front. Now, the building was $1.8 million and you got it for $1.4. Where's the candy? Get it out here. What's the building like? I mean, is it up to snuff? They're giving you half a million off on this property?
It's a great facility.
Is it good? That's all I wanted to hear. Good air conditioning, good beds, good things like that. No bed bugs, no. They're not running for something to run to something else. It's not too good. I don't believe this county would do that. I think it's a great day to hear that they do have a crisis shelter and just to get away quickly. I remember I was homeless six months, I told you, during finding this home here in Douglas County. And during that time, I was sexually assaulted in a massage place. I was doing therapy on my legs. And someone else stepped in, and it was pretty brutal. And I went out, I don't even know where it was now. I think it was out kind of where I bought a home. And there was a park. And a beautiful black family was having a barbecue that night. And I just sat on the hill. And I called the crisis line, 911. I was about to kill myself. And then I went home, but home wasn't safe either to me. And my husband called the police on me because I accused him. It just, you get wild crazy when you're that tortured. And I've been tortured a lot by that kind of man, an evil man, not a good man. So when I, a man in Douglas County that I had known in high school, I knocked on his door at 11:30 that night. And it just had a wedding. And that friend of mine from high school made a bed for me down in the basement, gave me towels and a shower. And I stayed there that night with him. And I left in the morning. And I'll never forget the kindness of that Christian man that was, is my friend, that took me in. And I could just sleep and get away and feel safe for just one night. And then I had to make some plans. But thank goodness for good people that wrap their arms around people that sometimes had a good life and tried to find it again. And it takes a lot of effort when the road is etched and the path, especially for women that give up jobs and opportunities even after college to rear kids and stay in the home. It becomes a very difficult journey without money and friends and resources, especially. I lived it. Thank you so much, Tim and Barbara, for your forward thinking, forward action, and compassion. And thank you, Douglas County, for embracing me during the most difficult time and my journey to freedom again. My father taught it to me. But sometimes life, sick kids, or just circumstances get you etched in a path that there is no way out. And so grateful I found life and love and joy and the strength of men and trust again, and beautiful women, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you for sharing that testimony with us. Very much appreciated, Jill. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and give public testimony on this purchase of real property? I am seeing none in the room. Turning to Troy. Troy, do we have anybody online who would like to give remote testimony?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
All right, Troy. Thank you so much. Bringing it back to the board for any discussion or action.
Mr. Chair, certainly would be honored to make a motion to approve the finalization of the purchase of real property from Crisis Center, Colorado nonprofit corporation, for the purpose of operating an emergency shelter and collateral programs for survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault in the amount of $1,476,000.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second are heard. Discussion. I'll go ahead and give us the final word on this one. I'd like to first and foremost express the gratitude of the board to the Crisis Center for working with us on this process. It was not an easy process. It was not a rapid process. Indeed, it was a process that, quite frankly, at times was a little on the painful side. We did have division on the board in terms of the path forward. And I appreciate my colleagues working through the differences, working to find what the actual needs of the community were, so that we can make sure that we provide this very important service for our own residents during their times of crisis and their times of need. I think it's extremely important, this work that we're doing today. And once again, expressing our gratitude for all of our staff members who put up with an equally painful process, as we told you guys what we needed and what we thought was appropriate to be done. And I think it was great work, great work by the people of Douglas County and their government to serve them. And God bless you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And purchase is authorized. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. All right. Next item on the regular agenda today is a resolution opposing the passage of Proposition KK. And this is presented, this is coming straight from the dais. Commissioner Thomas, you did introduce this for the board's consideration. Ma'am, how would you like to proceed?
I would be happy to read the resolution if that's what you would like.
Please proceed.
Thank you. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, Colorado, this is a resolution opposing the passage of Proposition KK. Whereas state voters will have the opportunity at the November 5, 2024 statewide general election, to change the Colorado revised statutes to add a firearms and ammunition excise tax. And whereas the constitutions of both the United States and the state of Colorado guarantee the individual right of the people to keep and bear arms. And whereas the taxation of a fundamental constitutional right is not only a prima facie violation of said right, but is repugnant to any proper sense of governance of a constitutional republic. Taxation of constitutional rights other than the right to keep and bear arms have been roundly and consistently repudiated and/or disapproved by our courts, including the Supreme Court of the United States. And whereas the estimated annual cost of this proposed tax increase to Colorado firearms and ammunition purchasers is a ponderous $39 million. And whereas the intended uses of the proceeds of this proposed tax include recipients, mental health patients and domestic violence victims, that have very little or nothing to do with the firearms and/or ammunition. And whereas thousands of Colorado citizens legally own and responsibly use firearms, imposing a tax on their rights to pay for unrelated purposes and/or the criminal misuse of firearms is not only patently unfair, but a gross abuse of government authority. And whereas it is the responsibility of the Colorado General Assembly to see that the proper and appropriate funding of public priorities and to identify fair and equitable means for funding those priorities, rather than imposing an unfair, excessive, and unconstitutional financial burden on a targeted, law-abiding population for merely exercising their constitutional rights. And whereas by previous resolution, this board has declared this county of Douglas, state of Colorado, a constitutional county, whereby the constitutional rights of his residents would be respected and protected in all manner from government encroachment or abuse. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, Colorado, that the board opposes the passage of Proposition KK and urges our citizens to vote against this ballot measure at the General Assembly.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions from the board pertaining to the resolution? Hearing none. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public to come forward and give any public testimony on this resolution. Jill, come on forward. Once again, Jill, just for the record, please do give us your name. Tell us where you're from.
Jill Campbell, Highlands Ranch. I would support this tax on them because it's not taxing those in our government or military who hold firearms. It's actually putting a tax, 6.5%, to support the mental health needs and those victims of these crises. Some of the groups it includes, it would be a $39 million tax at 6.5%. That $30 million would go to support victims of crime from these same gun violence. And that the additional $8 million would fund behavioral and mental health services. I think it's a beautiful tax on people that bear arms. And sometimes I disagree with bearing arms, but if you're going to buy it, let's tax them so they help those that don't use it. This guy uses it. Good. I know that guy. I would support no tax on his guns or the military that defend our nation. But these taxes, the groups include Violence Free Colorado, the Colorado Coalition Against Sexual Assault, and the Colorado Organization for Victim Assistance. And they've launched a campaign in support of the measure. And it is opposed, it does oppose, sorry, it is opposed by the National Rifle Association, which calls the proposed tax nothing more than an attack on the Second Amendment and those who exercise the rights under it. I say if you bear an arm and you're not defending like a good man in our community or the military that are called to serve, then you should be taxed on those guns because your sometimes inability to use that kills my child or his father or her brother. And we need taxes to support crime assistance and these that use arms that don't use it in a protected way by our government law officials, the one standing right there, that I would stand behind his hat or hide in the cave. I would stand behind a strong man that has a gun. I'd run away from one that isn't so strong but uses it weakly to kill his brother. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to give testimony on this resolution? Seeing none in the room. Troy, do we have anybody online to give remote testimony on this resolution?
I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. Bringing it back to the board for discussion or action.
Thank you. I would just like to reiterate that there are millions of gun owners in this country. And they are law-abiding citizens. And they practice their ability, their constitutional right, to have firearms, to buy ammunition, and to buy parts to build weapons, if that is what they want to do. And to tax these individuals who are simply exercising their constitutional right is wrong. This county has funded millions of dollars for mental health needs. And so by approving this, we are not saying as a board that we do not support why people need mental health services. We have paid for millions of dollars for services. What we are saying is that it is wrong to tax law-abiding citizens for exercising their constitutional rights. I appreciate my fellow board members allowing this to come forward before us for our residents as they are filling in their ballots. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for the discussion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was part of the board of county commissioners that declared Douglas County a constitutional county. And we, no doubt, hold the rights of free citizens to defend themselves against tyranny, a fundamental right. We've also consistently been fiscally responsible and anti-tax. So I'm pleased to be in support of this resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner. You know, listen, hey, Jill, I really appreciate your perspective on this one. I'm going to disagree with you on it, though. I really go back to what was captured in the resolution and read into the record by the commissioner in that, you know, we don't tax fundamental constitutional rights. We don't fund our elections through a poll tax. I mean, granted, that was used in the past of our history of jurisprudence as a means of suppressing the vote among the poor and, quite frankly, along racial lines in our nation's past. But I do see this proposition that's being put forward as being very much like a poll tax. It is a tax on our fundamental right to engage in a constitutional duty, constitutional right that we have. And so I'm going to be in favor of the resolution. With that said, board, it does sound like we have three that are in favor of the passage of this resolution opposing Proposition KK. How do we wish to dispose of it?
I have a motion to approve a resolution opposing the passage of Proposition KK.
And I'll second that motion.
All right. There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that resolution passes unanimous. Our next item is another resolution opposing the passage, this time a proposition 131. Once again, it comes from the dais. Commissioner Thomas, you had proposed this before the board. How would you like to introduce it?
I again have the resolution if you would like me to read it.
Please.
Thank you. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, Colorado, a resolution opposing the passage of Proposition 131. Whereas state voters will have the opportunity at the November 5, 2024 statewide general election, to change the Colorado revised statutes, establishing all candidate primary and ranked choice voting general elections concerning the conduct of elections. And whereas this proposal would drastically and significantly change the way candidates are nominated and elected in Colorado state office elections, upending and discarding the time-honored and historically successful process used since the- used since the establishment of our state 148 years ago. And whereas the success of our time-honored electoral process in offering opportunity, choice, and clear decisiveness stands in stark contrast to the wide-open processes used by other nations, which often result in fractured governing coalitions that dissolve at the slightest conflict. And whereas this proposal would also significantly complicate both the manner in which citizens vote and in which those votes are processed and counted, leading to voter confusion, a much greater public cost, and greater likelihood of delay, error, and mischief. And whereas the aspect of this proposal known as ranked choice voting appears to seriously run afoul of the vital and hallowed constitutional concept of one person, one vote, by permitting certain persons' votes to be counted more than once. And whereas this proposal by virtually guaranteeing more than two candidates in most or all state office elections not only lends to a lack of decisiveness, but a greater likelihood that the most popular candidates will not prevail, contravening the will of the electorate and severely undermining the public confidence in our electoral process. And whereas this board takes notice that a significant number of the citizens of the state of Alaska who recently adopted an electoral concept and process quite similar to Proposition 131 have seen fit to seek its rescission by placing an initiative on their state's ballot to abandon open primaries and ranked choice voting and return to the traditional election process.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to give public testimony on this resolution? Jill, come on forward. Once again, for the record, please do give us your name. Tell us where you're from.
I think I can support you after I said it, Tressles, for the third time. That is a lot of land. Maybe we need catways back on this land instead of city girls. Thank you. I don't know that I understand it all, but I agree with you guys. Thanks. So on Proposition 131, I agree. I agree that we should not do the electoral vote. Because first of all, when you, you know, just last time, I think it was two weeks ago. Two weeks ago it was. A gentleman stood up and he didn't like all the signs that weren't picked up. You know, that part of the law was don't place your signs on open space. And why are they falling? They're weak land and they're falling down. Someone do something for me about it. Well, you know, there's a lot to have done too. And I don't disagree that that was a law and he should have what he wants. But certainly, let's go a little deeper into what our country is facing. And our country is first and our state is second. That's where we go. So if we did this, like, I think the comment was made that I related to George, that you said something about, let me just pause for a second so I make it right. Let me just go past what you said and say what I say. So you can take what I say because I remember what you said. But for the sake of, you know, like the banners that, the AI that Trump created for his representation to win, you know, the democratic nation, United States of America, and flies banners over Taylor Siff's concerts and makes it, you know, that in itself, he's electing himself a king above the country by his own vote. And so in a democratic situation like this, yes, it is a slower process. It's a more constitutional controlled process. And it's a lawful process that each person gets to vote according to what they believe and not this consensus of sway the vote and sometimes you win and sometimes it's right. We have a law and we've lived this nation under the direction of the vote. And if everyone vote, we might, they won't, we bet. And if I could generally say the percentage, say we have 30% no speak English. And we got 60% Americans that won't speak English, that speak English about their vote. And I'd say that's here too. I've spoken every time, three times each meeting. And I'd like, I'd talk to a man and they're complaining in Douglas County. The House has won 960 homes for foreclosure in Parker. Do you know, do you guys know that? They're track homes. I almost moved out. I won't, but I might. And not because, because no one speaks. And the guy at T-Mobile, I asked him, come today, speak if you're so angry. If you're too busy on your Blue River Lakes that are infected with little octopuses that will get in your house now, or you're too busy on your green, but this is your county, your country, and my kids are at the front dying for it and I live alone because my uncles and brothers already died, then stand up. You have the First Amendment right to speak what you want. And we can only speak if only for consent. And I don't work for you.
Thank you, Jill, for sharing your comments. We appreciate them. So anyone else who would like to speak on this resolution? And seeing none in the room, Troy, do we have anyone online who would like to give remote testimony on this resolution?
Thank you, sir. I have no online comment.
All right, thanks, Troy. Bringing you back to the board for further discussion and any action.
I'd like to thank my fellow board members for allowing me to bring this forward. I think that there is a lot of confusion about ranked choice voting and what is called jungle primaries. There are 10 states in the country that already ban ranked choice voting and Alaska has it on their ballot this year as initiative number two to get rid of it. It's already failed in other places. I think that this is opposing the way we have voted for years. And I support the way we currently vote and changing it would not be a benefit to the residents.
Thank you, Commissioner. Further discussion?
You know, thank you, Mr. Chair. My view with respect to my colleagues is that elections belong to voters, not a small group of out-of-touch insiders who don't reflect the values of the average Colorado voter. I heard several times that our historic current process is time-honored, but the facts are a little bit more clear. Colorado's most recent primary election saw only 26% of eligible voters cast a ballot to determine the candidates in the November election, many of them running unopposed. So again, I think as much as we have all witnessed and seen the historic process, the average citizen in our county is disenfranchised when it comes to the political process. And there's no doubt that special interests and party insiders have a benefit when it comes to the current system. I know those people and I have worked within the party for many years and am very cognizant of how the system works. But my view is that I'm here to represent the will of the average citizen, the people just paying their bills at the kitchen table and don't have time maybe to go to a caucus or an assembly. But they deeply care about our values and want their vote to be counted. So in my mind, this may not be a perfect solution, but I think it's far preferable to the status quo. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. You know, I'm in favor of this resolution for a number of reasons. First and foremost, those of you who know the composition of the board, you know that we are, we run at large here in the county, but we must originate in our own areas. And we've drawn three districts here in the county. Commissioner Thomas is the north and northwest corner, predominantly Highlands Ranch in population. Commissioner Layden from the northeast corner. And then mine is really everything south of Castle Pines. And the largest municipality in my district has already undertaken a pretty in-depth conversation to adopting ranked choice voting last year and rejected it. Rejected moving forward with it. We've seen other municipalities in the state adopt ranked choice voting. And they already have degrees of buyer's regret because people get done at the end and they see who won the most votes. But then it's sometimes very difficult for the average voter to understand why the person who won the most votes did not win as mayor of Boulder. And it introduces a level of complexity that quite frankly, I don't think, I wouldn't want to say that the average American is, you know, not able to absorb and understand it, but we don't want to. I think we want to have our vote cast. We want to vote who we want to vote for. And it's the expectation that that individual will win or lose. And to have it that I'm going to vote for my second choice and it's my second choice who will be elected. Well, I don't know. Did anybody marry their second choice as a spouse? I mean, that's just not what we do. Does everybody have their second choice for a job right now? Maybe some of you do. But that's not what we do. We don't settle for anything less than the best. And so from my perspective, ranked choice voting, what is encompassed, the rules that are encompassed in Proposition 131 just runs contrary to the American mindset. And it's something that if adopted, just like those agencies that have, those jurisdictions that have adopted something like Proposition 131, we will all have buyer's regret eventually. So I speak in favor of the resolution and do urge a vote of adopting. Board, how would we like to dispose of this resolution before us?
I have a motion to approve a resolution opposing the passage of Proposition 131.
And I'll second that motion for decorum.
Very well heard and seconded. Any further discussion?
If I could just add, this is so confusing. I tried to write in my newsletter about how this would work. And if there's four candidates and your first choice gets the least number of votes, that name is removed and then your second vote would be counted because your first one got thrown away. And that just seems to me to be patently unfair. That's just one of the many reasons I do not like this. I do not support this. And I appreciate what Commissioner Teal said about wanting your first choice. That makes a lot of sense to me. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Further discussion? No further discussion heard. We do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Heard. Resolution passes two to one. All right, at this time, we've come to the end of our regular agenda and it's time for citizen comments, organization comments. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than those that appeared on today's agenda. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. Please state your name and where you reside prior to making comments. You will have up to three minutes. Now, any obscenity and any comments calling for criminal or violent action are prohibited and could result in your removal. Commissioner comments, if any, will follow. All citizen comments. At this time, do we have anyone to come forward for citizen comments? Yes, ma'am. And ma'am, please do give us your name and tell us where you're from.
Hi, my name is Nicole Martin and I'm from Parker, Colorado. I just wanted to thank the commissioners today. I'd asked Commissioner Thomas for an opportunity to come and view you all and see what you do on a daily basis, which I know you work very hard, to just kind of get a better, I'm very visual. So to get a better look at what you do. And I'm just incredibly impressed on all of the different balls that you guys are all working through, even the staff. Just wonderful job. I think back to, even during COVID, what this team, you three, did for not just this local community, but you really set such an example, things like that you did even when it came to like our healthcare back then and how we were in tri-county health and how that, you guys were able to get us out of that so we could really make our own decisions as a community. And so I just want to say as somebody that watches online quite a bit, I've got, my husband's a business owner. I've got family that are business owners. I've got some people that are in like a ministry, religious perspective. And everything you guys do matters. Even to the point, I got to sit in a little meeting this morning about the roads and the bridges. If you drive out of Douglas County, it is shocking just within two seconds, the roads compared to ours and all the detail that that takes. And then also just to compliment the wonderful new Center for Domestic Violence. I can't even imagine how much work that was for you all and your team. And so I just want to commend you as someone that has not been sexually assaulted, but very familiar with what that looks like when you walk into an ER and it's staffed and you've been assaulted and you have to sit there and you don't have resources. Or being a young person right now with everything that's happening with bullying or I have a daughter that has chronic pain, depression is a real thing. And it's really hard and when you don't know where to go. And just what you brought up about pets and not even thinking if you have to leave your pets. I mean, all the details that you all think about that I am the average citizen. But I just want to compliment you all. So thank you for everything you guys do. I really appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Martin. We appreciate your comments. Anybody else to come forward for citizen comment? Jill, go ahead and come on forward. Once again, for the record, do give us your name and tell us where you're from.
Yeah, the amount of things you guys have done just while I've been here has been incredible. Roads, bridges built, passage of so many things. Things that, you know, most, you can read through the amount of things you do behind the scenes and you're like, how are you guys even eating sometimes? Because I don't think any other county could do what these three together with their personalities. And I'm like, I'm glad you're a fighter, Laura. I'm glad you're a winner and I'm glad you're a military stance and you protect both on both ends. But no, I'm kidding. You guys have been beautiful to watch. The humanity, the authenticity of the struggle, of the human spirit, of the wants and the needs and the gives-ups. And look, look at them. They've done so much good. So much good. Unbelievable if anyone even knew. So and the two men too as well. You got to have good two, strong men on that side. Just pass these laws and protect the laws that are actually, are they lawful? They are. So if I can, it looks like we have a few more minutes. Abe, Laura, and can I just play something or is that unlawful? It's another song. Would we end on a good song? It's about the rain and the beauty of friendship. Is that okay? Pass or not?
Jill, we do ask for comments.
Okay, good. No more music. That's what I wanted to protect. But I do want you guys to know that there are so many people that can't even breathe. They can't even make their payments. So when we demand the American people to know what's going on, they don't. They don't even have time to feed their children half the time. I've ridden so many Ubers. And I remember once a man from Burma, I gave him a tip, quite a hundred dollars. He'd never seen a hundred dollars. They're feeding five children and men mostly are Ubering. There's no work. There is no work. There's no work. There's no work for me. If I wasn't self-reliant and knew business and money the way I do. I took a Safeway job when I got here and then hit by a car. Took most of my alimony, to be honest. What a struggle. What a struggle for the American people who are paying more for our medical, our medicine than we can afford our food. What a struggle for the man who comes home and doesn't want to walk through that door, that can't pay for the little girl's dance clothes or whatever. The mom has her dream for the daughter to be a dancer, the son with a football helmet. And when I first got here, I met, I think, forgive me, it's up on, by the new firefighter station, that high school up there, sorry, I can't remember the name of it. Four, six football players were standing on Safeway and they had to pay for their uniforms. And you know, me being an athlete, I was lucky. I bought, I think, 300 or 100 of those gift tickets and passed them out to my friends at the Christian church. Support our local businesses and then we can feed our families. And you've done that.
Thank you, Jill. We appreciate your comments. So anyone else who would like to make citizen comment at this time? Seeing none in the room, Troy, do we have anyone online for citizen to comment remote?
I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. We'll go ahead and close citizen comments and move to commissioner comments. Board, do we have any comments to share with the public?
I would just like to thank Mrs. Martin for being here. She's a constituent and she asked me quite a while ago what it was like to be a commissioner and we had a conversation. And I said, why don't you come spend the day and watch? And so here she is spending her time watching. This is the kind of citizen that is engaged and wants to know what's going on and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Martin, I would just echo those sentiments. I think you're an exceptional citizen for taking time out of your day to connect with us and learn about what's going on in your county government. No one will ever know who we are compared to, you know, the celebrities on TikTok and the things that a lot of teenagers and young adults pay attention to. But there's an old saying that you may not care about politics, but politics cares deeply about you. This board is charged with the health, safety, and welfare of nearly 400,000 individuals and the legal responsibility for and the legal responsibility for the health, safety, and welfare of each and every one of them. So we are really passionate about our jobs, and I think you witness that sometimes, but all of that is possible because of citizens like you. So thank you.
I guess I'm just sorry that you had to watch the sausage being made during our transportation budget meeting, our capital improvement project meeting. For my comments, I just wanted to talk about something that I'm actually a bit proud of, and I think it's a nice accomplishment and lasting legacy that the Board has brought forward. And if you all will look around at the room, you'll notice that we've put some of our guiding principles up in the room here. You know, this meeting chamber has existed for, oh, over 25 years now, and the whole time, you know, we always wanted to reflect what Douglas County is. We're certainly not the fanciest. You can someday go down to Pueblo and look where the Pueblo County Commissioners meet, and it's like a miniature Congress. And that's certainly not what we have here. We've got something that I think reflects the people of Douglas County, but it always, I feel like we were able to add a little solemnity. We've got our national mottos on two walls, we have our state motto, and thanks to Commissioner Layden, we've got this wonderful, wonderful quote from the Gettysburg Address by Abraham Lincoln. And I feel like these are the guiding principles that we can pass on to the Boards to come to the future of Douglas County as this is who we are, this is what we believe. And when our residents come into this room, they will know that this is a place of government, as it says, of the people, by the people, and for the people. That's why we're here. So thanks, thanks, Abe, for going along with my crazy idea. I appreciate it. I think it's a gift that we're going to be giving to our colleagues in the future.
Well, as a point of personal privilege, Mr. Chair, I did not want to make comment about it before you had the opportunity to, but I want to be very direct that you are not one that seeks credit and pats on the back for your initiatives and accomplishments, but they are many. And in your endeavor to share credit with us, this was your idea. And future Boards of County Commissioners and the citizens we serve will see these important quotes and phrases from our history and the fabric of Americana because of your initiative to bring those forward. So it's an honor to see them here, and I would just add, we also have an invocation at the beginning of every hearing because of your thoughts and ideas. So we thank you for that, sir.
Thank you. No problem. I get to live here too. Let's move along with any other business. Board, any other business for today? County man, thank you, ma'am. County manager, any other business?
Thank you, commissioners. There's a 24-page update report in your packet. If you have any questions, please let me know.
All right. Thank you, county manager. With that said, we do have a few more minutes before we move on to our land use meeting and public hearing. Let us go ahead and adjourn. Our next business meeting will be held on Monday, November 4, 2024, at 1:30 PM. Hope to see you then.